Good evening. Welcome to tonight's, excuse me, tonight's city council meeting, October 19th, 2015. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bullock.
Here.
Councilman Amador.
Present.
Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson. Councilman Benson.
Here.
Councilman McAldoney.
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will everyone please rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? And tonight, please keep in your prayers, the family of Lou Harmio. Charlene passed away over the weekend, and she was a very big advocate of Commerce City and did a lot in this community. I know their family's going through a rough time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, would the staff please pass the microphone around and allow the audience to introduce themselves, if you can find it.
Thank you.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Hannah Mullen.
Danielle Hearsley with the 2K program team.
Scott Hergenrader with the 2K program team.
And Doug Heinmann from IT.
Armando Wadiola from Finance.
Cheryl Carstens, Finance.
That's everybody. Welcome, and thank you for being here. First item on the agenda is going to be Citizen Communication. We have one person signed up, and I better read this anyway, Hannah, even though it's just you. As we approach the election, season council would like to remind candidates for elected office, political activity in city buildings is prohibited per resolution 2008-60. This includes campaigning from the podium. Please give your name and address for the record. Welcome. Hannah Mullen.
All right. Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Hannah Mullen, 12600 West Colfax Avenue in Lakewood. So I'm here tonight just to give you all a brief update of some upcoming events that we have from our office. So I'm with Congressman Pearl Mutter. I didn't mention that earlier, sorry. Anyways, we have a government in the grocery event happening on November 7th up in North Glen. It's going to be at the Natural Grocers from 10:00 a.m. until noon, and it's first come, first served, but I wanted to make sure you were all aware of that event happening. And then on Friday, November 20th, we're having our second Senior Resource Fair for this year. It's going to be at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center from 10:00 a.m. to noon. We had almost 150 people show up last time, so we're hoping for an even larger turnout. They're really excellent events, and we have over 30 organizations signed up to provide resources to seniors, so it's a great opportunity. And then the last thing I wanted to note is we are currently going through our academy nominations process, and we have two applicants from Prairie View High School that are Commerce City constituents, so we're really excited about that.
Awesome.
So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any comments or questions for Hannah? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, I got one.
Oh, you have one? Steve, go ahead.
What was that date again for the grocery, government and grocery?
November 7th.
Okay.
It's a Saturday.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have August 31st, 2015. I need a motion to allow council members Benson and McAldoney to abstain from voting on the minutes. This isn't working today? Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. McAldoney?
Second.
I have a motion as second to allow council members Benson and McAldoney to abstain from voting on the minutes of August 31st. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes of August 31st. Mr. Amador?
So moved.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion as second for the minutes of August 31st, 2015. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And I'm just going to call on you guys randomly because I got no lights. We got no request lights.
Let's, let's see if we can fix that.
Okay.
Give me just a moment. Okay, your lights should be flashing, right?
Nope.
Your present lights, would you please press those for me?
Nope, they're not flashing.
Hold, they're not?
But the request light works now.
Hold on.
Yeah, the request light works.
Are they flashing now?
Yep.
Okay, would you go ahead and press those for me?
Okay.
Mr. Teeter?
Aye.
Huh?
It's on, it's flashing.
Would you press it? It's not pressing?
How's that?
There you go, okay.
They're working now, thank you.
They're working.
All right, before we go any further, I need a motion to excuse Councilwoman Carson from tonight's meeting. Mr. Bullock?
Move to excuse Councilwoman Carson from this evening's meeting?
Mr. Teeter? I have a motion as second to excuse Councilwoman Carson from tonight's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of September 21st, 2015. I need a motion, well, I don't need a motion because she's not here. Councilwoman Carson would have to abstain from that, seeing that's the only issue. Then I'm open for a motion to approve the minutes of September 21st, 2015. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, motion to approve the minutes for September 21st, 2015.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion as second to approve those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now we move into the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion in a separate vote. Tonight, there are seven items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion and a separate vote? Seeing no one, I will need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mr. Geller, you want to read the titles?
We haven't had the motion.
Motion, motion first. Mr. McAldoney?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Second. Now you can read the titles there, Bob.
Title reads, "For Ordinance Z 927-15, An Ordnance Rezoning From C3 to R1 Zone District, The Property Described Exhibit A Attached Here-To Made A Part Hereof Located At 7010 Fairfax Drive, Commerce City, Colorado, And Amending The Zoning Map Of The City Of Commerce City, Colorado To Reflect Said Rezoning." Title of Ordinance 2069, An Ordnance Amending The 2015 Budget Of The City Of Commerce City, Colorado By The Recognition Of The Department Of Justice JAG-BURN Grant Funds In The Amount Of $16,354 For The Purchase Of Tasers To Be Used By Police Department Personnel And Authorization Of The Expenditure Thereof. Title of Ordinance 2070, An Ordnance Amending The 2015 Budget The City Of Commerce City By The Recognition Of The Bullet-Proof Vest Partnership Grant Funds In The Amount Of $9,568.54 For The Bullet-Proof Vest Program In The Police Department And The Authorization Of The Expenditure Thereof. Title of Ordinance 2071, An Ordnance Amending The 2015 Budget The City Of Commerce City, Colorado By Increasing The Budgeted Revenues In The Capital Expenditures Fund By $15,700,000 For The Recognition Of The Payment From Colorado Department Of Transportation, CDOT, For Ownership And Maintenance Responsibilities Of 8,676 Miles Of State Highway And The Expenditure Thereof. Title of Resolution 2015-106, Resolution Appointing Members To Designated Boards And Commissions Of Commerce City. Title of Resolution 2015-107, Resolution Approving Correction Quit-Claim Deed From South Adams County Fire Protection District Number Four. Title of Resolution 2015-108, Resolution Approving Grant Abesement To South Adams County Fire Protection District Number Four. Now it's the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a motion as second. Consent agenda, the titles have been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, eight in favor, one excused absence. All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing, Resolution 2015-36. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the finance director, Carson's, forward to make a presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. I will provide a brief overview of the budget for you tonight. The budget was made available in your Dropbox. I hope you all have had a chance to take a look at it. It has a refreshed look this year. Armando Wadiola is our controller. He is here in the audience tonight. I'd like to personally thank him, Jaclyn, and Mark from my staff. They've put a lot of effort into giving the budget a facelift this year, so I hope you like the changes. It reads better and I think is laid out more efficient, so we will be eager to hear your comments about the new look of it. General fund revenues this year are projected to be $68.3 million. We do have a few transfers coming from the court surcharge fund balance of $140,000 and the CIP fund of $40,000, making up a total revenue of $68.5 million. On the right-hand side of your screen, you will see the expenditures listed. Administration, $4.1 million. Human Resources, $979,000. Finance, $12.9. Community Development, $3.1. Public Safety, $15.2. Public Works, $5.7. Refuge Collection, $1.6. Parks Recreation and Golf, $10.8. In addition to those operating expenditures, there are transfers coming out of the general fund to various funds. Those are also listed. The Housing Authority of $60,000. The Elected Officials Retirement Fund of $44,000. The Sales Tax Bond Issues Fund for debt payments of $2.9 million. The Sales Tax Bond Issues Fund also for the 2K portion of the debt service payments of $4.5. Transfer to the CIP fund of $1.2. URA fund for the Derby Catalyst Program of $83,000. After the expenditures compared to the revenues, we anticipate adding about $891,000 to the general fund fund balance. In addition, with the 2K revenues subtracting 2K expenditures, we anticipating adding $3.5 million to the 2K fund balance. And then we're making a transfer to fleet for a couple of 2K vehicles, and then transfer to the CIP fund of $469,000, matching that revenue of the $68.5. This is just a brief overview of where we ended the 2014 year to recap for you. Our general fund fund balance was $6.1. Our general fund fund balance, the 2K specific, was $8.3 million. We are required to set aside three different reserves. The operating reserve was $5.2. The Safe Card Reserve, $9.5. And the state required Tabor Reserve of 3% was $2.1, for a total fund balance of $31 million. We do anticipate having those same fund balances at the end of 2015. Those estimates are not included here because we need to get through the 2015 year before we can calculate those. Doing a brief estimation this afternoon, though, I anticipate that to be about $25.7 million in comparison to the $31 million that's listed here. If residents are interested in looking or asking, seeing more about the budget document, there is a copy on file in the city clerk's office for their review. In addition, on the city's internet, there is a draft copy. We listed that as a draft because council has not taken action on that yet, so that will be there for them to review until November 2nd. And then, as I mentioned, you have that available in your Dropbox for review as well. In terms of what's next, obviously, tonight you open the public hearing. That will be continued until November 2nd, at which time we would ask you to close that public hearing, adopt the budget, and certify the mill levy to the county. At this time, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Does the council have any questions of Ms. Carstens at this time? Mr. Amador?
Not really a question, but more of a comment. When I first got on council in 2013, the numbers looked very different, and so we'll just say that from a snapshot, there's a good $10 million more that the city is managing. I also like the format that we've come to, and maybe I'll say it's a little more colorful, not just black and white. But even from that perspective, the content is a lot easier to digest or at least take in. And so those are my general comments. So good job, especially looking at what other cities publish out there. I think to staff, again, I'm sure this was a big overhaul because it looks different, and so, good job.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I want to also echo that what Councilman Amador has said, and I really appreciate this. I can say the same, too. This is, really breaks down things down really well with the revenue and fund balance, and you're saying estimated $25, $25 million, it comes up with $81. So, no, it's a, it's a total, I mean, there's 265 pages, and so everything that you want to know about the city operation, it's all here, broken down. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Benson?
Thank you. You know, when I got on the council, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but our budget was about $48 million. Is that right, about right, Bob?
About right.
So it's increased about $20 million. And maybe somewhere between $10 and $15 million of that is due to our 2K project, which the people of this city voted for. And so I want to thank all the people of this city for having the foresight to give us this extra money so that we can do the 2K projects, because without that, where would we be? So, thank you.
I also would like to thank you. I like the new format, and I know people out there watching, they see how much the budget has went up over the years, but you have to understand most of the increase is due to voter-approved initiatives, and it's going to help with the Tower Road and the new rec center and the parks, the water park. All of it is going to be great additions to our community. So, Mr. Benson's right. Thank you to the residents, but I have to thank you for the new layout of the budget, because it does read a lot easier. And if anybody wants one, they can come down here and take a look or get it off the website, the draft.
The draft right now, yes. Once the public hearing closes and the budget is adopted, we will be, we will be printing the final version of the budget, and then we will amend the version on the internet, so it will still remain there, so they can get it in either location.
Either way. All right, perfect. Now, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on the budget? Seeing no one. Would the council like to discuss the budget proposal? No? Okay. Need a motion to continue the public hearing to November 2nd, 2015. Mr. McAldoney?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion as second to continue the public hearing to November 2nd, 2015. Will the city attorney read the title?
Title of Resolution 2015-36 reads, "Resolution Adopting The 2016 Budget And Certification Of The Mill Levy For The City Of Commerce City."
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and it's continued to November 2nd. All right, next item on the agenda is presentations. We have a rec center projects update. I'd invite Scott, our Hergenrader, forward to make the presentation. Hopefully I didn't screw your name up too bad.
Be great, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. We are pleased to be here tonight to provide an update on the recreation centers outreach, and three main areas we wanted to cover tonight was provide an overview of the programming effort that many of you were able to participate in, share the results of the public outreach, and to provide an update on our progress and the next steps. As you know, we recently completed the programming effort to better understand the community's critical success factors for the new recreation center and the existing recreation center, identify what would be the desired amenities, desired class programs and offerings, and that the expectations are still in line with the QCI findings from back in 2013. As we worked importantly with you all and with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, as well as the Citizens Advisory Committee, a number of critical success factors were identified, and I won't read the entire slide, but the key areas were community engagement, transparency, timeliness and budget, equity between the facilities, flexibility, forward thinking, and sustainability. And there were some really good discussions that happened with all of the folks who helped define what these success factors were. Importantly, the community was significantly engaged in this process. We had four public meetings in August. There were 37 attendees at each of those meetings, and that included a number of, this is just the citizen count, but that also included a number of you all, as well as members of the Citizens Advisory Committee as well. There were two focus groups. One focused on Spanish speaking and one focused on seniors. A lot of great input provided from each of them as well. You see the number up there, both on the web-based and from the paper survey, there were over 800 responses that were received through the process. Now, just to create some perspective, back in the QCI process back in 2013, there were approximately 400 participants or respondents during that timeframe. Recently, for the two neighborhood parks, we had 600 respondents, and now with the new and existing recreation center process, we had in excess of 800 respondents. So, felt like we got a great, great feedback from many in the community. This is a little bit of an eye chart with some statistics here, but I think importantly, as you look up at the top-hand corner, you're going to see where was your residence located, and you can see that the respondents were really evenly distributed from both the 27J School District as well as the 14 School District. That's how folks identified their, their location in the responses. Also, I think importantly, in the box right below that, how long have you lived in Commerce City? 30% of the respondents were actually new to the city, so basically had been here either less than two years or two to five years. 70% were long-term residents, so that's really a great response, and I think also helps to support the outreach again for this programming effort to make sure we got the input from those, those citizens. If you look in the bottom left-hand corner, many of the respondents were female, and approximately 75 to 80% age-wise were under the age of 45, and 20% were over the age of 45. So, again, obviously, those with, many with young families were also the leading respondent as you look at household status in the bottom left-hand corner. Nearly 70% of those respondents were couples who had children at home. So, we feel like we got a really good cross-section of the community through this outreach effort. So, with that, what did we hear? First, on the existing recreation center, and many of these items were confirmed from what was learned during the QCI process, is additional locker room renovations were needed, there was a lack of support spaces for spectators, desire for a therapy pool with warmer water, clearly, the size of the facility limits offerings and that building flow could be improved. So, many of those comments were understood during QCI, but those were echoed again here during this process. What did we hear for the new recreation center? We heard that a community space that would be accessible to all of the city would, would be beneficial. It needed to be built and designed to meet a growing population, and as many of you just mentioned during the budget phase with the growth that's occurred in the city, that's an important feature. We heard loud and clear, start with the core amenities that you would expect to see in a recreation center, those things including weight rooms, pools, multipurpose spaces, et cetera, and also multifunctional spaces with opportunities for age-specific programming, as well as for family programs, areas, and services. So, great feedback. So, here's some more statistics. As part of the survey that went out, with a rating of one being definitely not needed or a scale of five being very important, the top five amenities were all related to aquatics or fitness-related, so each of the folks who responded identified those as being the top. Importantly, almost everything was higher than a three, so there were a lot of great amenities. You can see the list of all those items on the left-hand side, and nearly all of them ranked three or higher. In terms of desired classes and programs, and again, one definitely not needed or five being very important, and if you look at the solid green bars there on the left, the things that came up across at the top were sports and aquatics programs were the two most important programs, and those were 58 and 59% respectively. But wellness, fitness, and family-oriented activities were also ranked very important by over 50% of the respondents. So, a lot of, a lot of interest in aquatics, wellness, fitness. So, in terms of the validation that we got out of the original QCI by going through this programming effort, we were able to compile all of the input from the various meetings and surveys, confirm that the community's needs are still in alignment with what was found during QCI, and with the specific amenities that I just focused on and mentioned, which is aquatics, wellness, fitness, and use force facilities and programs. Importantly, the feedback we got from all of the groups was that the recreation centers needed to be looked at a system of facilities and programs for the entire City of Commerce City community, not just for a particular geographical location. The list of the amenities and the programming that you just saw, and taking that feedback directly from the community, is now being incorporated into the request for proposal for the design for the recreation center. So, as we look at the critical success factors and how these are being manifested and incorporated into the request for proposals for the design, we believe that we've covered all of the different areas that are important to the community in this process, so that the feedback you all provided will be translated into what starts in the design process. I'll just focus on a couple of points here again without reading all of this, but on flexibility, down at the bottom of the slide, the design will allow for multiple purpose spaces and future program changes, and on forward thinking, the design will allow for future building expansions to accommodate the future growth. We heard that from a number of you all. We heard it from the Citizens Advisory Committee, as well as from the community at large. So, going forward, things are moving forward quickly now, so for the new recreation center, we're going through the design selection process right now, and design is anticipated. That contract, we anticipate, will come into you all in December. A conceptual design for the facility that takes into account all the programs and all of the amenities that we just talked about, we expect to have in spring of 2016, and we'll be going through a process here this winter to qualify and select a construction manager, general contractor for the actual construction and delivery of the facility. On the existing recreation center, which is really just trailing the work on the new recreation center by essentially just a quarter, we'll be starting design in the spring, and the conceptual design, we expect to have some ideas in the summer of 2016. And so, importantly, we wanted to thank all of the citizens of Commerce City who participated in this effort. We wanted to thank all of the folks on the Citizens Advisory Committee, as well as you all. We heard great comments on the critical success factors. We think the communications team really hit it out of the park with the outreach efforts and garnering that many folks, and we're off to the races. So, if there's any further thoughts or questions, you all happy to entertain those.
Does council have any questions or comments? Mr. McAdonick?
Thanks, Scott. I just wanted to echo your compliments regarding the outreach effort. I think it's, it's, it's great to see the trend that this, that the overall contact, that the engagement, the involvement is, is increasing, and I think, you know, we often get frustrated that we don't have enough folks show up. We have live meetings, and it seems like we just get a handful of people. Clearly, using these various tools helps us secure a greater level of input so that we can make decisions with a higher level of confidence. I think we'd all love to see it still higher, but obviously, hats off to all involved, and hopefully, we'll continue to see those, those participation levels increase. And, you know, I think about our recent Telephone Town Hall and was looking at some of the statistics on that tonight. Maybe there's a way to use the Telephone Town Hall format in future, you know, chapters where, especially with this rec center as we get down the road, where maybe the Telephone Town Hall is a way to introduce some of the concepts, use some of that live surveying so that we can have some more interactive dialogue. I think the, the challenge of straight survey through telephone survey or a web survey is that it is just static, right? And one of the beauties of those Telephone Town Halls is that obviously, we get callers in queue, we have somebody screening those calls, we can see what questions are coming, we can, you know, we could work in a room with, with a, a set of experts, including, you know, staff and council perhaps, to, to identify what answers we might have offhand, or at least be able to speak to the audience that's tuned in about the questions that we're getting and what follow-up might be needed, but to be able to use that survey tool in real time, I think would be really intriguing. So, hats off, and maybe, maybe that's something that staff can explore and let us know if that might be, might be viable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. I agree also that as the information went out and what we received, I think was great that citizens were listening, and I think this input going forward is really going to help with the architect and all to make this process work, just like a dip for the pool, so I appreciate that.
Great. Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Amador?
Thank you, Scott, for the presentation. For us councilors on the dais, could you speak a little bit more to the RFP process? I did skim the 151 pages that was there, and I think when we talk about starting design for the new rec center in December of 2015 and starting design in spring of 2016 for the existing rec center, but can you just elaborate a little bit about what that looks like so that we understand on the dais what's going on?
Certainly, absolutely. It's a great question. The request for proposal process actually started earlier with a request for qualifications or an RFQ process so that we could create some excitement in the area and help firms identify that this would be a great opportunity for them to pursue. We actually had over nine companies, actually, nine companies exactly, responded to the request for qualifications. They provided us with a statement of qualifications, and since we're now asking for more detailed proposals, we shortlisted to four firms so that we can really get into a lot of nitty-gritty detail on their specific capabilities and how they would take this process forward for this project. So, there's four firms currently involved who are going to be meeting with us tomorrow morning for a pre-proposal conference to take the next steps in this process.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have a comment. This last week, I did receive an email from one of our senior citizens in the southern portion of our city. She was concerned that she, she felt she had got adequate information from somebody saying that folks that live in the south part of Commerce City would not be allowed to go use the rec center in the north part of Commerce City. Did you talk to this lady, too? So, I, I think it's important that everybody understand that our recreation facilities, our city facilities are there for all of our residents regardless of where you live, and they're there for non-residents that want to come and pay a non-resident rate to utilize those facilities. So, nobody is making one rec center for one part of the town and one rec center for another part of the town. They're for everybody that is in the city, and I think that that's an important piece. Some people felt kind of that way about the pool, that it was only for people that live down here. It's not. All of the city's facilities are for all of our residents and non-residents, if they'd like to pay the non-resident fee. That's all I had.
Great, Mayor. Thank you. That, that is a comment, and I think that did really pop up as part of the critical success factors and equity in looking at all of these facilities as a network of facilities to serve all Commerce City residents.
I agree, and I'm glad that you, you touched on it for a minute, but I just wanted to make it clear for people that are home watching that any of the facilities are for any of the residents.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Administrative council business. Mr. Benson?
Just a simple thing. I know I'm going to be out of town on Thursday. There's an E470 meeting on Thursday, and I think Mr. Douglas may be able to go to that. If he can't, I would just like for us to appoint somebody else in the event that Mr. Douglas can't make it, because over the past eight years, I don't think this city has gone unrepresented, unrepresented at E470 more than about once or twice, so I'd like to keep that up. So, does anybody want to volunteer to do that if Mr. Douglas can't make it?
You going to be able to make that, Steve?
We'll have it covered with Steve.
Okay.
All right? If he can't make it, then he can let us know, and we'll put someone else.
Sorry, yes, I will make it. I'm going to make, move some things around.
If you can't, just let the mayor know, and I guess...
Okay.
The mayor can appoint somebody.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was covered. Thank you.
Mr. Amador?
Thank you. This is a request. I've taken numerous phone calls on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, and had contact with a citizen about the potholes on 87th and Willow, between 88th and 87th. Apparently, this portion of the city was annexed within the last four years, and it is a Commerce City street that we own, so if we could just take a look at the potholes and the situation to try to get that figured out to help the resident. Thank you.
Jim?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to bring up very briefly the city council retreat that we have planned for January. I've talked to some of you. I had a chance to chat with some of you tonight. We've got a, a minor conflict with the initial date we selected of January 22nd and 23rd. The Police Department Badge and Honor Ceremony will be Friday night, the 22nd, and so just want to see if the council wanted to reach some consensus tonight on having a, just a one-day event on Saturday, January 23rd.
What are the desires of council? Mr. McAdonick?
Thanks, Jim. I, I think in the, in the interest of ensuring that we can support our, our PD that night, I think it makes sense to consolidate to that Saturday. Obviously, it'll add a little bit of time on that Saturday. I know it's going to be a pretty intensive discussion this year, but, I mean, in, short of trying to find other weekends or some mixed match of times, that may be, may be the best avenue. Any, any other comments?
Is there a second?
I would so move. I will so move.
Thank you. That's what I was hoping for. Second. I have a motion and a second to have it all day on Saturday so that we can attend the Badge and Honor Ceremony. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried.
Thank you, sir.
Any other administrative council business? I do have one that I want to bring up. Oh, Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, this just came to my mind. Reflective of the Telephone Town Hall that we held last Tuesday evening, there was a question that came up in the queue regarding trailer homes that were being brought in to a subdivision 6900 Highway 2. I did receive an email from necessarily Bob's I did receive an email from, not necessarily Bob Zeiler, but one of his family members. I neglect to remember the name at the moment, but I just wanted to follow up with that because that was a question we didn't really have an answer for at the time, so we couldn't, you know. Definitely. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Douglas, you have something further?
Yes. I had a couple of things. One is the schedule of the asphalt replacing the dirt on 112th. How far that's gonna go when Shea's done with their, bringing in their large trucks to finish that infrastructure as far as the piping in the streets? And then I had a question about weight restrictions on 68th between Colorado and Delia, I mean Delia, because since the old high school is, has been taken down, is those restrictions, have they been lifted, or are they still in place? Okay. And then the last one, if we could have an update on that progress pedestrian ramp that's between Heartland and Kingsupers? Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Steve. Mr. Bullock?
Yes, I have a couple of things, and one of them, I received a phone call about a week, two weeks ago from a gentleman that wanted to explain to me how 60th Avenue from Quebec to Walmart was just horrible, and I told him that it was going to be overlaid and it would be starting later than we anticipated when we sent out the cards because of the weather that we received in May. So some of the schedule got backed up, and I see in your city manager update that it's going to start on the 26th, that 60th Avenue is going to be done, and Holly and some of the Rose Hill neighborhood will be ground down and a mill overlay put in. Also, I received a phone call and about the bike lanes on 60th Avenue, and right now we're investigating instead of, it's a possibility, instead of having them on both sides of the road, maybe there's a possibility of having them on the south side of the road so we don't have to take out the parking on the north side, because that would be a hardship for some people, but it's just an investigation now. I'm not gonna promise anything, but if we can do that, that would work better for probably all concerned. But the city manager's office is going to look into it to see if that is a possibility to get done.
Mr. Benson?
Yeah, just to further discuss that matter about the, I got the email that you forwarded to all of us. I don't think it's a good idea to eliminate parking spaces to put in a bike lane. Put the bike lane down on 59th or 61st or something, but not on a major thoroughfare like 60th. That's an inappropriate place for a bike lane anyway. I mean, you start eliminating parking spaces for people. As that gentleman said, if you have a visitor to your house, where are they gonna park? Around the block? Think about moving the bike lane to another street. It's not gonna be so active and crowded with vehicles.
Brian?
The city has created and adopted something called the Walk-Bike Fit Master Plan for our community, and that called for these improvements on 60th Avenue, but we're gonna take another look at that and see if there are any other options.
Yeah, thank you. I think that would be appropriate, and if you do have, I guess the council can always amend what is done before, so, okay. Thanks.
All right. I wouldn't disagree with Jim. I'm worried about parking on 60th as well. We'll let the staff investigate that and get back with the council as to what's gonna happen with 60th Avenue from a street marking, a pavement marking perspective. I do have a few things. First of all, I need to make sure everybody knows Renee Bullock is going to be the mayor in charge while I'm out of town from Thursday of this week till Sunday at the leadership conference in Chicago. And then I will also be out of town the 29th of October to the 6th of November on a hunting trip with my son. So this will be my last meeting before the election, so I wanted to take the time to make sure that I let all of the candidates know good luck and best wishes in the election. So I won't have that opportunity between now and the election, and I will be at the study session, however, a week from tonight. So, Mr. Bullock, anything goes wrong, it's your fault. All right? All right. No other administrative council business, and I worry about that with him, so.
And we'll go on to reports. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute via email this week's edition of the city manager update. It includes an update of an upcoming RTD Telephone Town Hall on October 21st, a brief update of the city's leaf and green yard waste event that was held this past Saturday. If you've read through the update, you'll note that based upon some feedback from Mayor Protem Bullock, we're considering a second event next month. At the time we scheduled this event, we anticipated the leaves would have dropped. It's been a bit of a late summer this year, so fewer leaves have dropped than what we expected when we scheduled Saturday as the date for the event. But the good news is, we have some funds in the budget to be able to schedule another one next month. So thank you, Mr. Bullock, for that feedback. We have an update. The 104X bus route will continue into next year. It's through its trial period. The grant funding will run out the end of this year, but RTD is seeing enough ridership on the route to continue the route next year. One minor change, the last route of the day from downtown Union Station back up to Commerce City, the 5:50 PM departure, will not continue into next year based upon the number of riders that they've had on that route, but all of the other routes will continue next year at RTD's cost. So that was good news. But we do have some results from last week's Telephone Town Hall for your benefit and for folks who want to review the city manager's report on the Internet. We do have the update on the Mill and Overlay Project, the Mayor Protem Bullock mentioned a few minutes ago, so there are some more details there. Again, we're gonna take another look at the parallel parking bike lane possibility on 60th Avenue. We have an update on our efforts to work with RTD to possibly move the 104X bus route on westbound 104th Avenue, just west of Chambers Drive, Chambers Road, rather. The net result is RTD is not willing to move that stop. We have some information in there as to why they're not willing to do that. At this point, I don't think there's anything else that city staff can do. We were willing to pay the expense, and RTD is just not supportive of changing the location of that bus stop. Councilman Amador had shared some concerns with us from Commerce City Youth Athletics. We have reached out to the gentleman that made the complaints to Mr. Amador, so we're hoping to get in touch with Mr. Ingram and sort that issue out. Then we have the monthly capital improvement program update, and as we usually do, the look ahead to the city council work schedule. So I'm happy to answer any questions either tonight or after the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAdonick?
Thank you. This was actually, back on the RTD question, obviously, I know that RTD is carefully monitoring the ridership on each of those periods of time. Do we know how significant a difference the ridership was on that last route? I just, I think about how many times I drive out of the neighborhood around that time, and I see literally the same pack of people walking from that drop-off. So I guess the question is, can we get some insight on that ridership on that route? Because I think it would be helpful to try and identify, if possible, who those riders are in advance and let them know about that change. Second, if there is a cost involved in maintaining that, would it be worth our while to help support that added window? And I guess, third, when was the last time we had any promotion of the route to our residents? I think if it's a matter of ridership, that's gonna allow RTD to fully fund those routes in times, then I think it would be in our best interest to try and help promote the use of those routes, and maybe even in, you know, using language that says, without your ridership, these routes are not gonna continue. And so if it's not too late to explore some of those alternatives, I think that would be helpful. The other question that has come up in very recent conversations has been the ability to use those, use that route for special events, and what might the opportunity be for RTD to help provide, whether it's Broncos-type shuttles or other special event-type transportation? You know, if folks could just get down the 104 to Union Station, then from there, they can get to Mile High, they can get to Pepsi Center, they can get to pretty much anywhere. Obviously, the 104 is nice because it does get you to Union Station. I guess the alternative would be, from a longer-term perspective, seeing what we can do to get connectivity down Tower to the new Penya Tower facility that's being put together by Full &amp; Wider in Denver. Either of those are gonna give our citizens an opportunity to use their car less often and keep the traffic down on those roads and get folks, you know, maximize, obviously, the use of the transit facilities that are available. So, thanks. Does that make sense?
Those are great comments, great feedback. We'll explore those.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gaylor?
I'm sorry. Wait a second. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I just wanna take it back on Councilman McAdonick. You know, since they're having a Telephone Town Hall meeting on Wednesday, the 21st, maybe, I don't know if they can do a survey or not, maybe they already have things planned out, but we should at least let them know what our feedback is on that, and maybe they can bring that up on Wednesday. And yeah, 'cause as far as that route, there, I know there's a lot of people who have utilized that last day of the route, making their day start later than sooner because that route changed. So I think people will be really concerned if we let them know what's going on, because how soon are they gonna, this is for next year? And it's already, did they already budget for this to take place? Is there a time that, what's a timing that we could change this if there is?
Offhand, I don't know the answer to that, but we'd be happy to explore it. I think your suggestion to provide this feedback to Commerce City's RTD Board Representative Paul Solano during the Telephone Town Hall Wednesday is a great idea.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Gaylor? And welcome back, Mr. Gaylor.
Well, it's good to be back. I was on vacation for about 10 days in New York area, had a good trip. While I was gone, my information is that my office functioned well, so I hope that's correct. That's the word that I got, anyway. So I don't have anything new to report, except to say that's good to see you all again.
Thank you. All right, I'll get into my report. I guess it's been about a week and a half ago, I met with an Albert County Commissioner, and they wanted to, one of our developers told them to come and talk to Commerce City. Me and some of the staff met with the Albert County Commissioner. Jim Hayes was there with us, as well as Roger Tinklinberg, and she wanted to know how we went through the process of getting our first GID in place and how to try to help Albert County through her position as Commissioner to create infrastructure for new development. And it was a very productive meeting, very nice lady. Her name is Commissioner Door, and she grabbed me after we were done with the meeting, and she said, you know, I have to tell you, this was really great, really good information. I think I'm gonna be able to use some of this to help Albert County. And she said, I have to tell you, growing up in Colorado and knowing Commerce City for what it was, it's the last place I ever thought I would ever be going to get information on how to do something, because you guys have really done it the right way. And she said, it's very encouraging what changes she's seeing from the outside looking in at Commerce City, which I was really appreciative of the fact that, you know, we actually have people coming and looking at what we're doing and trying to utilize that to help our own communities. So, you know, those kind of meetings make you feel good. And we had a Water Commission meeting. I know Mr. McAdonick couldn't be there, but I was there and covered that. We had the Walk to School Day. Myself, Crystal, and Rick all showed up, and we walked with the kids at Monaco Elementary, and that was a great time. And then I ended up getting a little bit under the weather, so I wasn't able to do a few things last week, and Renee Bullock ran the study session instead of me, and I wanna thank you for doing that. As well, I was unable to make to the Telephone Town Hall, but I know most of you were all there, and I understand it went well, and I'm looking forward to looking at the city manager report. Excuse me. Had a meeting with the Cowley Companies. I think it was great. They made a nice donation to the 1A campaign, which I think is great, because, you know, that would be very beneficial to Commerce City if that's to pass. And then I had the pre-trip briefing for the leadership trip to Chicago, and I will be on a panel discussion, and it will be around the DIA 1A ballot measure. So I look forward to coming back and being able to report to you how the next trip goes this week. Is there anyone who would like to add anything to my calendar? Mr. Bullock?
Yes. Last Friday, the CML Policy Committee had their first meeting for legislative policy for the upcoming legislative year, different substantial legislation that CML is going to get behind, either to support or not support. And this was just our first preliminary meeting to look at legislation that is possibly coming up and how we feel about it. We will have our second meeting in December, and then after the legislature starts, we will have our third meeting in February. And there is a lot of interesting legislation that is coming up. Some of it is going to directly affect Commerce City, and we are right there in the middle of the pot, saying that there are things that we will not support because it's not gonna be beneficial to our city. I will continue to report as legislation evolves.
Mr. Teeter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did take advantage of this green dump we had over the weekend. I'd like to thank staff and personnel for putting that on. I see in the report, there was 91 vehicles that did come through there. I was one of them. I have a very large yard and a lot of green material. I did have Maria, which come over and dumped my 955-gallon barrels for me out of the back of my truck, but it was a very, citizens enjoyed it, very good program for them.
All right. Seeing no other reports, if there be no further business to come before the city council Commerce City on this evening, we are adjourned. Now I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order of the NIGID meeting, and we'll go into the minutes. Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Ford?
Here.
Vice Chairman Bullock?